From Palm Coast Parkway to Palm Harbor Parkway, right through Florida Park Drive. I think that's pretty unacceptable. Parents don't care who ITT was. They are concerned about how the city is protecting their children. There are two non-residential connections to connect Palm Coast Parkway and Palm Harbor Parkway without going through any residential neighborhood. Why don't we use those two non-residential connections and protect all residential neighborhoods in the area? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. Pale, are you? You don't need to spend $50,000 on a study what you're planning to do because that's for one road. If you're going to do a study, do it all. What if, you know? Do the what-if drill. It works. Get the map, change it. You closed Florida Park Drive to fix a roadway. Nobody complained. It was closed for a week, plus people found other ways to go. So it isn't inconvenience you're going to create. It's going to be something down the road with traffic being increasing here in Palm Coast. Every year it's going to get worse. You complain about the Metanza's intersection. That's going to get worse. You complain about everything, but you don't do anything. You hear complaints from people. Nothing's done. Seven years, according to Steve, Florida Park Drive he's been complaining about, not one penny. All you had to do is, simple, talk to the sheriff. They have traffic people. They can give you information. And they can tell you what it is that traffic calming devices work, one-way works, planning works, everything works. It's just doing it. Instead of study, 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 spending, spending, study, study, study. You don't need a study. You've just got to say, I'm going to take Burt of Paradise, make it a one-way, this one a one-way. Talk to the experts. Lower the speed limit, put in speed calming devices, and let's get this over with. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Mr. Reichman, if you will address Jack's comment, please.
Sure, sure. You know, the city of Palm Coast, acting in its capacity as a civil enforcement, we have certain powers that do not include any allegations or consequences for alleged criminal behavior. That is something that's within the jurisdiction of the sheriff's department as well as the state attorney's office. So the speaker was referring to some Florida statutes, mayors, as well as general statements regarding, you know, the behavior, the alleged behavior of a citizen or a company that may have invoked the jurisdiction, these jurisdictions that I'm referring to. And that would be something that would be the decision process of the sheriff's department or the state attorney's office. Now, what the city does have control over is over its own employees. And those actions were taken, and those actions are public. And there were consequences. And that has been done. So as far as the concerns that the resident, the speaker, Mr. Carroll, has indicated, those are, as far as criminal matter goes, that's not something the city has control over. And we just don't have any power to deal with those issues. What we have had power to do, we have done, was done, it was done as soon as it was found out and the consequences were imposed.
So Bo, did you have anything to add to that?
Sure, yeah. I'll just add to Mr. Reichman's comments that we have an internal investigative team that reviewed this matter. During their course of their investigation, they also looked and looked at the contractor's records to see if any sort of, you know, permit holds were lifted or any sort of actions were taken by staff that was out of the norm for how we deal with contractors. And that report did not conclude anything like that happened. So the city of Palm Coast has a higher standard than actually Florida does for acceptance of gifts. And so this matter primarily was the acceptance of gifts. You know, I think below $25 was threshold in Florida statutes. And so we dealt with the employees per our personnel policy and procedures in fully support of the directors that made those decisions. And so for the matter of whether the contractor did it with the intent to influence, our records did not indicate so.
Let me just also state that obviously we now know that this contractor, we made it very clear that our employees are not to accept gifts at any time. So, you know, certainly if it would happen again, we would question, obviously, his intent.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you to the other two speakers. We will now move to agenda item number E1, which is the approval of the minutes of the May 7, 2019 business meeting.
Move of approval?
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number F2 is a presentation of overview of fund accounting and revenue restrictions.
Mayor, council, this was originally scheduled for your workshop. Of course, we get a larger crowd to present to, but this is the start of basically our educational process about the budget. And so Helena and Lena are here to talk about fund accounting, not fund, but fund accounting and revenue restrictions.
Lena.
Thank you, Bo. Good morning, mayor and city council. Helena and I are here today as-
Bo mentioned, this is one of our budget presentations that lead up to our workshops to help prepare you as the decision makers for the upcoming decisions that you'll be making during the summer months. We'll be back in just a few weeks to talk to you about property taxes, once again, just to provide an overview of the property tax process as well as our TRIM compliance. And then, of course, that will spill into our July and August months where we'll provide you with budget workshops to discuss each fund, and then into September where we'll have our public hearings.
Thank you. Good morning. We hear a lot about fund accounting. So what is a fund? Basically, the easiest way to look at a fund is that it represents its own checkbook. It is subject to specific regulations, and it is its own unique checkbook because it's segregated based on purpose. So they are restricted, they're considered restricted revenues, and can only be used for that specific purpose. It cannot be used for general operations. And like I said before, segregated in its own checkbook. So if you think about funds as checkbooks, then it's easier to apply the restrictions.
Well, also, you know, we want to add the fact of this is also policy-driven. Some of those funds are restricted by state law.
Absolutely.
Some of them are restricted by our own policies that we've established. Some of them are the percentage of the policies we've established by recommendations of different organizations and agencies.
Yes, absolutely. The city of Palm Coast has two types of funds, governmental and proprietary. The biggest difference between the two is that governmental funds are primarily supported by taxes, where proprietary funds are supported by the user fees. Now, within governmental, our three categories are the general fund, our special revenues, and all capital projects funds. And we'll go into detail throughout the presentation of what represents each fund and the revenue sources associated with it. Now, for proprietary funds, we have our enterprise, which are charges for outside users outside of the city, and our internal service funds are charges within city departments, and we'll go into a little bit more detail. As I said before, the governmental funds are supported by taxes, and in this case, they support the administration and finance, our public safety, fire and police, community development with the exception of building. Building is a proprietary fund, and it's supported by user fees, and our streets and parks maintenance and parks and rec. The easiest way to think about this is public safety is available when needed, not necessarily when it's used. So we don't associate a fee with using the fire department. It has to be ready for service. When we go into proprietary funds that are supported by user fees, a good example is utility. As you use the water, you pay for your usage. The same thing with our solid waste fund. You know, as you use the waste services, you're assessed a fee, and that fee is covered on a monthly basis. Now, information technology is on there, but that is the portion that relates to the fiber utility, not the portion that relates to our IT operations. We go into revenue restrictions, and that's what the mayor was mentioning earlier. They're guided outside of our power. So the general fund is basically the only fund that has unrestricted revenues. And our biggest revenue source in the general fund is, of course, ad valorem. It's about 22 million. And our second largest revenue source in there is the half-cent sales tax. That is associated with shopping local and is a portion of the state's 6% collected within Flagler County that comes back to us. Now, the intent of the state by returning a portion of that sales tax is that it provides some relief from ad valorem. So if they weren't providing us with that portion, that would have to be made up, of course, either by increasing mileage or reduction in services. The next slice belongs to the communication services tax, and as we mentioned before, this is one that we've seen a decline over the years. It has not grown, and it's something that it is definitely on radar for the whole, for the industry as a whole, that at some point we may have to supplement it with other types of revenues. And we also have the state revenue sharing, and that is another portion. It's a mix of the different revenues that the state then reallocates back to local government. Now, we go into our restricted funds. Now, special revenue fund, we have, these are our main funds, of course, the streets improvement fund. This, again, is another one that, whose revenue is related to shopping local. Every time you fuel in Flagler County, that portion of that revenue comes back to us, and it's used to maintain our roads. Now, again, these are restricted revenues, and they're restricted by Florida statutes. It can only be used to maintain our roads. We cannot use it for operations. Also, in this fund, we have a portion of the state revenue sharing, which is also required by Florida statute that it be used for transportation expenditures. Our other main special revenue fund is state road CRA. That one, the revenues within the CRA are for the development of the CRA. Now, revenues going in there is a portion from the city of Palm Coast, about 721,000, and a little bit over a million from Flagler County. We have two categories in capital projects funds, our capital project fund and then impact fee funds. The small county cert tax, which is the half percent of a 7% sales tax collected within Flagler County, also, like I said, a product of buying local, has been committed for the construction and improvement of public facilities. So these are the revenues that go into our capital projects funds that are used to, for instance, projects like the city hall, the community center, and that city council has committed to the public works facility. It was adopted by Flagler County ordinance, and it is distributed according to a state formula. Now, this revenue was adopted for 20 years in 2012, so it'll sunset 20 years from 2012. The other pocket for capital funds is our impact fee funds. These impact fee funds, we have fire, we have parks, we have transportation, and of course, utility impact fees. They are restricted to only growth-related projects. What does that mean? That means that new construction in the city provides these fundings, and it's used for their impact. It has to be for new things, extended roads. It has to be for new parks or for new fire stations. So it cannot be used to supplement any of our operations. It definitely cannot be used in the general fund. Enterprise funds, like I said before, those are our business entities. This is where they're funded by user fees. The people that are using these services are paying those fees. Our largest fund is the water and wastewater utility. Their revenues are restricted by bond covenants. There are bonds that were acquired to purchase the utility as well as bank loans to support its growth. And those revenues are used to maintain the system and provide for debt service payments. Our other major enterprise fund is stormwater. This is a priority of city council. The new rates were adopted, and this fund is restricted, of course, to maintain the system, but also for any debt service associated with the loans. Our building funds, revenues that come from the permitting side of the house can only be applied to building and permitting costs. So this is another one that's restricted. It cannot be used to fund planning or zoning or any of the other, what we call, development The other component of a fund is its fund balance. Now, the fund balance is just the excess of revenues over expenditures. Now, we do have fund balance policy. The fund balance policy covers those funds, mainly the general fund, utility, stormwater, disaster reserve, and fleet are our main funds. And the intent of the reserve is for emergency or one-time expenditures. It is not meant to be used as a revenue source for continuing operations. It is there for emergencies, and by having that fund balance policy and having that conservative mindset is how the city was able to handle the two hurricanes within one fiscal year without really disturbing our financial standing. That concludes our fund accounting presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Council, do we have any questions? I've got none. Thank you.
Nicely done. You know, it's the KISS rule, and I can absorb that.
We'll now move to the portion of our agenda, which is ordinance on second read. It's item G3. Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, council, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. It's amending the official zoning map for 7.1 acres, more or less, of certain real property generally located one-half miles south of State Road 100 on the east side of Old Kings Road, being more particularly described in the attached exhibit A to the ordinance. And we're rezoning it from Flagler County designation of agricultural to the city of Palm Coast designation of general, commercial, or comm. 2, and preservation or PRS zoning districts, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for a second date, effective date, excuse me. Mayor, council, this is the second read, as you stated, mayor, and this is a quasi-judicial matter. So if there have been any expedited communications since the first reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
Council, any expedited communications?
Mayor, council, this is the second reading. It was approved 5-0 on first reading by city council at the May 7 meeting. Since that time, there have been no changes, no additional public comment, and staff is recommending adoption and feels this is ready for final approval. Staff is available for any questions that may arise.
Council, any questions at this time? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number G3? Please do so at this time. When I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, undertake a motion.
Move of approval? Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number G4 is another ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Palm Coast order annexing by voluntary petition property located contiguous to the city of Palm Coast in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.044 Florida statutes. This is redefining the boundaries of the city of Palm Coast to include properties owned by JTL Grand Landings LLC. Located generally south of State Road 100 between Belterra Boulevard and Seminole Woods Boulevard, approximately 90.7 acres, as more particularly described in the ordinance. This ordinance provides for finings. It redefines the corporate limits of the city of Palm Coast, Florida. It provides for the taking of administrative actions for severability and uncodification and an effective date. This is the second reading, mayor.
Mayor and council, I know there are a lot of members of the public here for Grand Landings items, so let me just give an overview. This is the annexation. So this is incorporating the property from the city boundaries, and that's it related to this action. This is the second reading of the annexation. Jose has a map up for your information. It was heard and approved 5-0 on the first reading at the May 7 business meeting. There were no changes suggested to this item, and there's been no public comment related to the annexation. The property meets all the standards set forth in Florida statutes for annexation. Staff is available for any questions. Of course, we're recommending approval and feel it's ready for final adoption.
Council, any questions about the annexation at this time?
I've done.
Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on G4? This is only related to the annexation. No other topics of Grand Landing other than the annexation is being asked for, for public comment at this time.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. No, I'm just curious to know, why would this person or corporation, why would they want to annex into the city? What is their bottom line on all this? You know, nobody annexes, nobody does anything without a purpose. And I was just wondering if we could have some of that purpose shown to us. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bo, can you just respond to that, please?
Sure. You know, the property owner is annexing to the city, obviously with the intent to develop and receive services from the city that we provide, such as fire, water, sewer. And in exchange for that, of course, they'll pay city taxes, impact fees, in order to do so. So that's the reason why this property is not annexing to the city.
Thank you. Okay. Council, any other questions or comments on this item?
Comment.
Or attain a motion?
Move of approval? Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number H is ordinances on the first read. Agenda item number H5, Mr. Reichman.
Yes, mayor, council. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the city of Palm Coast 2035 comprehensive plan, as previously amended. This is pursuant to section 163, 3187 of Florida statutes. So it's amending the future land use map or FLUM designation for 119 acres, more or less, of certain real property from residential low-density rural estate, which is the Flagler County future land use designation, to residential city of Palm Coast future land use designation. And that's as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance. The subject property is better known as Grand Landings. The, this ordinance is amending a note on the future land use map to limit the land designated as residential in the Grand Landings Master Plan Development, MPD, to 1,150 residential units. And this ordinance provides for complex ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and an effective date. Mayor, council, obviously, first read. This is a legislative matter because it's a FLUM amendment. This is not quasi-judicial.
Mayor and council, once again, there were three items on, related to Grand Landings. Just approved the annexation. One of the first steps that we are obligated to do under Florida statutes is apply a future land use map designation to the property, and one that corresponds, you know, with, of course, what was under the county. So Jose is going to go over those details about the future land use map designation. Once again, I know there's several members in the public here for Grand Landings items. Just want to make you aware that your next item, the rezoning, the applicant is requesting continuance to a time certain of June 18, 2019, at 9:00 a.m., in order to work with the members of the community on some of the issues they raised during the planning board action. But this item is the future land use map amendment. With that, Jose, if you can go over the details of the future land use map amendment.
This item on agenda item number five, what we're hearing now is only about the future land use map, not about the specific items of agenda item number six. We'll take that item up on a continuation, that we'll ask for a motion for on that item.
Right. Correct, mayor. The applicant has requested continuance in order to work with some of the members of the community on some of their issues they raise related to the master plan development. So this item, of course, is two readings, the future land use map amendment. And part of the reason wanting to move forward with this item is it gets transmitted to the state, so there's some time delay before it comes back from the state agencies for comments. And so with that, Jose, be ready to present the future land use map amendment.
Good morning, mayor, and members of city council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. This is the Grand Landings Future Land Use Map Amendment, and the subject parcels here are a total of 119 acres, which are currently vacant. Council, you just took action for second reading to incorporate a portion of this property. And as you can see, these parcels are here and here, south of the airport, between Belterra Boulevard and Seminole Woods Boulevard. So the proposed FLUM map amendment, again, changing the county designation of residential low-density and rural estate to residential city of Palm Coast designation. And additionally, an amendment on the future land use map that will limit the residential land use designation to 1,150 units, from the existing 749. And that is a cap agreed to by the landowners. As with any comprehensive plan amendment, we did conduct a net impact analysis for public facilities, and certainly with the increase in entitled, in number of units to 401, there are increases to its impacts on public facilities. But those impacts are more than adequately accommodated for by our existing facilities.
Jose, if you could just hold on, go back to that slide, please.
Yes, sir.
Just want to point out, under the residential future land use map designation normally allows 12 dwelling units an acre, which would be about 1,428 units. So staff and the applicant have, as part of this amendment, mayor and council have added a text to limit that to the 401. So once again, the future land use map designation basically sets the general type of development, which is residential, and the maximum density. And so under our FLUM, the most compatible to the existing is our residential, which allows 12 dwelling units an acre, which would result in 1,428. But with this amendment, there's also a text amendment that further restricts and limits that maximum density. Thanks, Jose.
Thank you. In its review for consistency with the surrounding land use, the proposed residential land use is consistent with the other parcels around it, as you can see, to the, to the west and to the south, all designated as residential, which would be consistent with the proposed designation for the parcels. An evaluation of the environmental factors, there is no significant change in the environmental impact between the current and the proposed, since the current designation already allows for residential uses. And the proposed future land use map designation will continue to just allow the residential use. Reviewing it for other consistencies with comprehensive plan policies, it is consistent with the availability of having infrastructure adjacent to the site. It promotes a land use pattern that does not increase the cost of providing utilities, again, because it is already available on-site. There's no significant impact on environmental factors. Its consistency, again, with surrounding land uses in the comprehensive plan, and no impact on the level of service for public infrastructure. So at this time, staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board is recommending that city council approve the proposed future land use map amendment. And as Mr. Falgu said, after first reading today, if approved, this item will go to the state land planning agencies and other state agencies, including DOT, DEP, Water Management District, for review and comment on the amendment. After we receive those comments, this item will be brought back for a second city council public hearing. And beyond that, there's still the plating process to, to actually divide the land into specific residential lots.
Council, is there any questions at this time on agenda item number H5? Again, this is just a reflection of the transmittal of the FLUM. This has nothing to do with the rezoning, which we'll take up on the following agenda item.
Mayor, if I could add on to that also, and I know I'm piling on, but I want to make sure it's really clear to all of you, and that is that we finished the annexation, and we did that this morning. So the next step that the city of Palm Coast, any city is required to do, is you have to assign it a comparable future land use designation. And so that's what, that's the first step. That's what we're doing this morning. And we're changing it from whatever it was with the county prior to annexation to what is the most compatible, and you've heard the testimony of your staff, and that's residential. So what, the only, the only other thing that we're doing is we're saying, well, we're taking one additional step. We're saying, we're not just changing it pursuant to Florida statutes to a residential, city residential, future land use. We're also going to limit the maximum to what, from down from 12 dwelling units per acre on 119 acres down to a total of 401. There is no vested entitlements for how this property is going to be developed. Access, use of infrastructure, none of that is included in what you're doing this morning. All you're doing is what you're required to do, and you're placing a cap on it in addition to that. There's no, there's no vested rights about how those, those 401 units. I mean, that's all for the future. So I just want to make sure we're crystal clear on that.
I appreciate that. Council, any questions on that particular item?
I've done.
Open up to the public again. Any member of the public, you need to- Any member of the public, you need to speak on only agenda item number five, not on agenda item number six. So any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number five, please do so at this time.
Good morning. My name is Robert Meyer, and my address is 117 South Cooper's Hawkway in Grand Landings. The study that was done for the traffic and the schools and the parks, how is that done? Is that done based on the situation that exists today? Or does it look toward the future as to what the situation is going to be when these actual 401 units are going to be added? Which, in my opinion, is probably, and the builder's opinion, or the developer's opinion, is probably five years away. Can anybody tell me how it's arrived at?
I'll answer your question after public comment is over.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I have relative to this particular item, the 401 maximum, as you indicated, the zoning actually would allow up to 1,400 and some homes in that area. What assurance do we have that that maximum in the future, for whatever reason, would not be raised up closer to 1,000 or such as that? Is this something that we can count on that will not change? That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker. I was public comment. I would probably say to Beau, and then if you want to answer the question about how this codifies that, that would be appropriate.
Sure. I'll actually, Jose, if you want to answer what you analyze as far as infrastructure and what the state requires.
Yes, sir. What the state requires is a net analysis. That is, the difference between what's currently allowed on the parcel and what would be the maximum impact if we did, if this change was approved. But I believe the question that the gentleman was asking is that this is a snapshot. And when the development comes in, in five years, let's say with the plating process, there is a more closer-to-the-ground analysis done at that time. The analysis does not finish here, because, again, in five years, when they come in to plat, let's say, the 400 lots, at that time, that's when the school board does another analysis and says, okay, we have room, or we don't have room at the schools. Our utility department will say, well, we're close to capacity, the 401 units, we cannot accommodate, or can accommodate more than I can accommodate. But also, that provides the time that the right-sized pipe for any, some of the other development in the area that might have come in, so that the right utilities are installed to adequately accommodate not just the 401 units, but what's also happened in development during that time.
As far as the 401, what assurances will the residents have?
Sure, yeah. Good point, yeah. Yeah, well, you'd have to go through this process again. And I would, you know, remind everyone that we've gotten to this point, and there's a reason arguably why you don't have objections from the staff or the planning board, the PLDRB, is because there were limits placed upon the total, the maximum, maximum number of development. It wasn't the 12 dwelling units times 119, but rather, there was a limit placed on that. So if, to your point, if someone wanted to come in and increase the 401 maximum to something greater, up to the 12 dwelling units per acre, which are what are provided for in residential future land use, they would have to go through this entire process again. And they would have to explain to this council and to the planning board and staff why they were entitled to get more than, or why it was appropriate under our future land use in our comprehensive plan, and why it would be appropriate under state law, and why it would be appropriate under our land development code to increase the maximum density from 401 to anything more than 401. So arguably, the one good thing about what we're doing this morning is that it puts it in our code. It puts in our future land, in our comprehensive plan. It's not just a future land use designation, but on top of that, it puts a limit on the maximum that our comp plan will allow as far as the number of units. And so it codifies it, as you said, Mayor, and it requires, you know, another go-round in this whole process, which would be separate and distinct from what we're doing today, and would be a separate and distinct analysis based upon a request for more units than the 401.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, land use in the state of Florida, I mean, obviously, we're prescribed a lot of what we do by state law, but we have local ordinances that we have to abide by in codes. And so it trips the process all over again, which would mean, you know, meeting with staff, and then going through a planning board review, and then, obviously, that approval, and then the two additional ordinances in the public hearings. So, you know, but for now, you know, this does limit it to the 401 units and nothing more than that. Okay, counsel, any?
May I make one comment? The major concern I have, as you know, I have a strong background in traffic accident investigation and reconstruction. And my concern is, I hear Toby's listening back there, my concern is the traffic density impact. And I would like staff, when we-
The FLUM, though, I mean, what do you mean?
You know, what I want to know is how many vehicles are going to be added to our traffic? And will our highway exits and, you know, exits and entrances to this new facility be able to handle everything? Are we going to have a major backup?
I think Beau can probably answer that pretty quickly.
Sure, I think that will be, Jose confirmed for me, that traffic analysis will be part of the MPD, and then any further development proposals as a result of that, right?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Howell, to answer your question directly, with the next item, the rezoning, that's where you get into those details. State law is very prescriptive that we analyze the change. But as the development, you know, if you think a future land use map is 20,000-foot, you know, rezoning gets down to 10 or 5, and then you start getting further down as you get closer to doing vertical construction. So I think the actual traffic impact report will be part of the rezoning process that you'll see.
I just want to have our bases covered there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other counsel comments or questions on this item? If not, or a motion?
Move of approval? Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Okay, agenda item number H six, the developer is asking for a continuance, so I'd ask for a motion for-
To a date certain, too. We need to make sure that, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but we need to put that in the motions to a date certain. That's for the benefit of the developer, but also for, there's a lot of people that, you know, are here today, and they're entitled to know-
And that's to June?
June 18th at 9:00 a.m. in this room. It's your scheduled City Council business meeting that day.
I have a motion, please.
I'll make it. That motion that we-
Continue the item to June.
Second.
Other June.
I'm certain, June 16th.
June 18th.
18th, 18th, 9:00 a.m.
Did you make that, is that clear enough, Virginia?
Got it.
Okay. So is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. It just states, since it was continued to a time certain, public comment is not allowed during those items, but you will have plenty of time. I am asking that our staff be included in those conversations with the developer and the community, in an effort to ensure that that dialogue is one of openness, and that we can be communicated on what that dialogue is.
Absolutely, Mayor. Just want to add for members of the public, the rezoning is a quasi-judicial item. So, you know, the public comment really needs to happen during this item. I know several members made comments during the planning board. Those comments absolutely carry forward in the record. And, you know, part of the reason, my understanding, the developer requested the continuance is to allow an opportunity to have some subsequent meetings with HOA and community members to talk about some of the comments that were raised during planning board. So Ray has confirmed that staff will be present for those discussions as well, Mayor.
Let me just state, you know, openly for the record, that quasi-judicial means, for the residents that are here, that we have to act in an independent manner, so when these items are brought forth, that we are hearing both sides of the issue. We make that determination based on the facts presented to us at the time of the public hearing. So to be communicated with in advance of that, or to have this dialogue in advance of that, you know, is just not allowable under state law, under quasi-judicial items. So we appreciate you taking the time this morning to come out. And again, I want to ensure everyone that I want to make sure our staff will be present at these meetings with the developer to ensure that we will certainly have that on the record as far as the dialogue that's occurring. So thank you for your participation. I know this is important to each and every one of you. Okay, we'll now move to agenda item number H seven, which is an ordinance.
Mayor, counsel, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as previously amended. This is pursuant to section 163, 3.184 of the Florida statutes. It's amending the future land use map, or FLUM, designation for a 7.1-acre, more or less, parcel of land located 500 feet northeast of Old Kings Road Extension and Matanzas Wood Parkway intersection, as more particularly described in Exhibit A. We're changing the future land use map designation from greenbelt to mixed use, and this ordinance provides for codification, severability, and an effective date.
Beau.
Mayor, counsel, we have a joint presentation for this one, so do you want to read the second ordinance as well, Mayor?
And I'm number H eight.
Hang on, let me turn the pages. I'm getting there. This is the next agenda item, obviously a correspondence, and this is the rezoning ordinance that corresponds with the future land use amendment. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of this official zoning map. It's established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. It's defending, excuse me, amending the official zoning map for 29.61 acres, more or less, of certain real property, including all our portions of tax parcel ID numbers, 251030 4226, 4626 5000B0, 251030 4226 5000C0, 251030 4626 5000D1, 251030 40010200050, and lastly, 251030 4626 500Z03. Generally located on the north side of Matanzas Wood Parkway and west of Old Kings Road, is more being more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, if that's possible, from general commercial COM2, public semi-public PSP, and rural estates EST2, zoning district to master plan development, or MPD zoning district. Approving the master woods, Matanzas Woods Retail Center, master plan development agreement, providing for severability conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Now, the mayor, counsel, the, as I'm sure you know, the FLUM amendment is legislative, but the ordinance, I just read the title to, that's quasi-judicial. So this is first reading, so I'm going to go ahead and ask what I always ask on the second ordinance. This is confusing. If there's been any ex parte communications on this rezoning, those need to be disclosed at this time.
Also, any quasi-judicial items?
No.
Ex parte. Do you want to read that again, like, 10 times?
No, I do not. No, I do not. Once is enough.
I was going to yell bingo. Mayor, counsel, these items are related, so it just helps for ease in presentation. This is related to the Matanzas Retail Center. Back in September of 2018, the city and the developer did a land exchange in order to accommodate some infrastructure improvements in stormwater. This is obviously slated for a future retail center in the northern part of the city, which I think the community has definitely been looking for. So Mr. Hoover is here to give the details of both these items.
Good morning, everyone. Phil Hoover, senior planner with the Planning Division. The proposed Matanzas Wood Retail Center is located across Matanzas Wood Parkway from Matanzas High School.
Bill, can you move closer to the mic?
Sure.
I don't think it's picking you up. Thank you.
The project is 29.6 acres, and it's proposed for both a FLUM amendment and an MPD rezoning to allow for general commercial uses. And on September 18th, 2018, that's the date that the City Council approved the land swap. So there's essentially two parcels going to the city and two parcels going from the city to the property owner. The applicant's requesting about 7.1 acres on the north side of Matanzas to be re-designated from greenbelt to mixed use. And staff did an analysis on this, and the review of the impact analysis indicated there would not be a significant impact on public facilities, as the impacts will not exceed the adopted level of service. And the staff's review found that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan policies, including availability of infrastructure to support the project. It promotes land use patterns that do not increase the cost of providing public utilities and the location of commercial and employment centers in close proximity to residential development. Staff findings include there'd be no significant impact on environmental factors. It would be consistent with both the comprehensive plan and surrounding land uses, and there'd be no impact on the level of service for public infrastructure. Switching over to the zoning side, the property is got three different zoning designations. The red area is already zone COM2, general commercial. To the west, there's a narrow strip that is rural estates. And then to the south, where the stormwater pond is currently in the light blue, that's public semi-public. The 29.61 acres is proposed in an MPD for up to 150,000 square foot shopping center, including all parcels. And the applicant has agreed to develop the architectural style for these based on one of the following three architectural styles, or one that's determined to be similar to or very consistent to the design features and the quality of the architecture as one of these. And this is, you can see the public center, Beach Village Shopping Center. This one is Island Walk. And the other one is just down the street at the Town Center, Public Center. The applicant's traffic impact study for the project for Phase One, and that would be for 109,100 square feet of retail uses. It would show 468 a.m. peak hour trips, 810 p.m. peak hour trips, 9,656 daily trips. So after the engineer adjusts for multi-use and pass-by traffic, the project's Phase One net new traffic was estimated at 302 a.m. peak hour, 556 p.m. peak hour, and 6,552 daily trips. And then with the middle of a plat or a technical site plan application, the developer will submit an updated traffic impact study to analyze site access, like turn lanes and things like that. At build-out of Phase One, which is estimated in 2023, with the project's traffic included, all roadway segments and intersections within the study area will operate at level of service C or better, except for the intersection of Matanzas Woods Parkway and Bird of Paradise Drive, which is an unsignalized intersection. And in this case, the northbound traffic during the a.m. peak hour will operate at level of service F during portions of the a.m. peak hour. So the a.m. peak hour is from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. It would actually occur for 15 to 30 minutes of that time. And the main reason for this is there's a lot of commuters going to work. They're going north on Bird of Paradise. Additionally, there's a lot of students, or their parents or someone dropping them off to Matanzas High School. And then we also have about 20% of that traffic making that turn on Bird of Paradise, going either east in the morning, or maybe in the afternoon coming back. We determined that was about 20% of that. So the staff has met internally on this unsignalized intersection, and Carl Cody from the engineering said that when the new city traffic engineer gets here, I think in another week or two, he's going to have them analyze this. So it's not something that's going to be failing in the next year or two. It's more like something down the road here in four or five years.
And then, just to add to that, we talked internally, the amount of traffic impact fees generated- impact fees generated from a shopping center is substantial. And so, you know, most likely the improvement needed will be a turn lane, not a full signalized intersection. So, that's something we'll talk with the traffic engineer and definitely address before they get down the way in the development process.
Yeah, and let me add, because, you know, I, again, don't know who designed Palm Harbor Shopping Center, Island Walk, whatever we're calling it now, but it's probably one of the most ridiculous shopping centers I've ever been in in my entire life, as far as traffic flow and patterns and just getting in and out of there. It's, it's just, you know, it's odd that somebody would have designed that that actually did not take a moment and probably sit there and figure out who's coming in and how they're coming in and everything else. So, the stop signs are strange. There's no alignment with it. People don't know if they're supposed to stop, not stop. You have a Starbucks over there, so they're coming in through here. You know, you have another way to get out by, I think, Citibank, and it cuts through to Walgreens. I've had complaints by residents saying people are shooting out here. So, to me, it's not just good enough to say we're going to, you know, analyze it. We have to do a better job at that, because we can't repeat that ever again. I know we're limited on what we could do by rehabbing a very old shopping center. But, you know, I understand, you know, that having a Publix over in this part of our community is a good thing, frankly, because maybe it would alleviate some from going over to the other. And then, with the widening of Old Kings Road, I mean, I think we'll see a better traffic pattern over in that Island Walk Shopping Center. However, with the school district, that's a whole other, you know, portion that I want to make sure we're assessing, just because, you know, again, we do have students that drive over there. These are high school students. We did have a motorcycle accident over there with a student coming out. So, yes, we will have a new traffic engineer that's on board, but, you know, I, it concerns me when we're saying would operate on an F, and maybe five, 10 years from now, we'd have to make improvements, you know, to that area because of the capacity that we're adding to this. So, I just want to make sure that we have a human being, not just data, that's outputting, you know, well, this is, you know, how many cars are on this road, but they're sitting there, taking their time to understand where people are coming from, how they're coming in, and how they're utilizing the shopping center overall. I don't really see it in many other of our shopping centers. I don't see it in Kohl's. I don't see it in where the Albertsons used to be. I don't see the Belter Shopping Center with Target. I think that is not the complaint I'm making here, but that one shopping center that is heavily utilized and more stores are added there every single time, you know, I use that shopping center every single day, and I can tell you every single day, it makes me very uneasy. It makes me very uncomfortable. I'm not really sure where I'm supposed to stop. You're always, like, sort of inching out. And whoever was the project manager on that, you know, what I've been told when I first asked about this shopping center was, we as a city really just focus on getting the traffic off our roads and our thoroughfares. We don't really analyze the flow inside a shopping center. And I think we need to do that, because anybody that drives in there that could think that, okay, well, going here, like, going this way, if you're going to go to Starbucks, you're going to go through Publix and make this weird angle and go in, or if you're going to go yield, not even yield, you just keep going, and then there's a stop sign over here. I don't, I really don't know who designed that, but it's very, very strange. So, I, you know, I know.
Second that, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's every, every single day. It's just strange.
I would echo your comments on that, because I often wondered, what were they thinking?
Yeah.
You know, how did this come? What were they, in the back room smoking or something here to, you know, clearly, whoa. But, there's another issue, too. And, and that is, as you know, I can fly an aircraft through the eye of a needle. Getting off I-95 southbound at that intersection in Matanzas is a white-knuckle experience. Okay?
100%.
And that's going to have an impact here, too, because we're going to increase traffic coming to that shopping center. That's got to be fixed, either with a light or whatnot. I'll wait for the traffic engineer, and I'll sit down with him, and we'll come up with some concepts. But, something's got to be done. David, do you, do you know if there's been any significant number of accidents at that intercept, well, you know, at the departure there of I-95 southbound, or getting off?
In Matanzas?
Yeah.
We've had a few, I wouldn't say significant, we've had a few in visibility is the issue of it usually.
Yeah, because, you know, we got a line-of-sight issue here, and I hate to say somebody was right when they mentioned that once before, but it's true. And, and if we're going to expand that whole area, we're going to bring more traffic there. I don't want to see anybody die.
I just want to make sure that we're looking at all aspects of the project from the internal perspective and the external perspective, so.
Yeah, we, I think part of the new traffic engineer's orientation will be to visit Island Walk and make it clear that, you know, the challenge with that project course, it was redevelopment. This is a greenfield, so you're not restricted with what was currently already there, so.
Island Walk should go in traffic engineering textbooks as what not to do.
Yeah, you know, I was worried about when Starbucks went in there, and again, I mean, I'm over there every single day. It's just, I think it's a level of confusion. It really is. It's like, do I go? Do I not go? Do I stop? You know, who goes first? Who has the right of way?
That's another question. David, do you know how many accidents they have there in that parking lot at Island Walk?
Personally, no.
No, fender benders, you know, I'd like to find out if the sheriff has some record on that. You know, of course, a lot of, because they are just minor accidents, I'm assuming, they just get the form and fill it out. But, do we not have a record of that?
That's something that can be researched.
Yeah, I, you know, I want one of the guys to do that, just so we have an idea, because you're absolutely right. You know, it's, you know, I'd rather be in combat in Afghanistan than to go to that parking spot.
Well, I will say, I don't even know if it's accidents. I do know that I've seen a lot of gestures been given.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, absolutely.
Get told I'm number one all the time.
And horn blowing. But, there has to have been some fender benders because of it.
Yes. Bob, did you?
Well, I, you know, I'd be happy to pile on the Island Walk internal. I guess my only comment on that is, other than to agree with you and Councilmember Howell, and I think a comment that Councilmember Clufus made, one thing, and I would look to staff to enlighten us on this, about getting involved in designing the internal flow of a commercial, privately-owned commercial project, you know, it's kind, in my mind, is sort of self-enforcing. I mean, for 20-plus years, I was in what is now Island Walk, then Palm Harbor, two, three times a day, because it was the only game in town. I don't go there much at all anymore, and probably to the detriment of some of the smaller businesses that are in there. You know, the pet supply store doesn't get my business, because it's easier to get to two other pet supply superstores, things like that. So, I think that, and to a certain extent, that's the responsibility of the developer. If they can't provide their tenants with safe and easy access to their customers, then the business in the center is going to suffer. So, I would like to hear from staff in the future about what the limits of our legislative authority is in designing the internal traffic and parking for, you know, shopping centers, things like that, office parks. But, yeah, Island Walk is, is, is a mess, in my opinion, and I'll give my old guy historic reference. I'm sure Vincent Fiscomi is spinning in his grave, since he was the original primary planner for the old Palm Harbor Shopping Center. Nevertheless, my comment on the current item is that I, you know, I am very uncomfortable voting to approve something that is projecting a level of Service F anytime in my, I hope, lifetime on a public road here in Palm Coast. I, I'm normally more than happy to defer to our professional staff that know a lot more about these things than I do. And certainly, if this gets approved, I'm going to be very interested in talking to our new traffic engineer. But, approving something based on, we're going to hire somebody who's going to fix this, makes me very uneasy, because it's.
That's where I stood with the F.
Yeah, it's particularly upsetting, because so much of that traffic involves the school. A lot more of it involves the highway interchange that Jack has referenced, and I think we all recognize that that ramp exit needs attention, although we keep being assured it doesn't meet the, meet the warrants for a traffic signal or some other improvements. And that's really beyond our control, as I understand it, since it is a state highway. But, I, yeah, this, this particular proposal that we have in front of us on that one point, I think it's a good project. I think it's something that's needed up in that area. But, the traffic doesn't make, that one item and the traffic does not make me feel good, so.
Mayor, Council, and if, you know, this is first reading, if, you know, that's the direction. I believe the issue with the LOS F is that, since it's, you know, one lane, when a car is turning left, it backs up traffic. The majority of the vehicles are turning right towards the high school. So, that's really the issue in the AM morning, is you'll have one car turning left. They have to wait longer for, for the road to clear before they can turn left, instead then the traffic backs up. But, if you would like, that kind of, when I saw it in the presentation as well, that I think we, we do need to determine what the impact fees generated and what the fix would be for that issue before we get there. So, Ray, is, I don't know if the applicant can speak to that, but that acceptable, we can determine what the fix to correct that LOS deficiency and how it would be funded through transportation impact fees.
Yeah, and, I mean, we can add some additional language in the master plan development to assure an appropriate analysis and fix of it. It's not uncommon. We've had projects in the past at the, what Bo indicated earlier, 30,000-foot level during the rezoning process, that when we do a preliminary traffic analysis, sometimes we do show that the level of service has decreased. I can, a couple examples would be the Cobblestone Shopping Village. When we did future land use of that and did that analysis, it actually showed that Cypress Edge, we're going to have some issues and some issues along with that. Once the site plan came in and we actually did a more thorough analysis of that, the developer contributed their proportionate fair share to make those improvements, such as cutting off, if you remember right, at Walmart, you had the folks coming in and being able to take a left, a left out and a, and a right out at that location. Part of that proportionate fair share to address some of those level of service issues was to cut that off, also to add an extension of that roadway. So, you know, we look at these things preliminary, because we, we don't want to be caught by surprise. And when this site plan comes in or the plotting process, we will definitely address it, and we'll analyze the impact fees that may be generated from this specific development to make sure that the level of services is in accordance with our comprehensive plan and meets our city's level of service. That's exactly why we do this.
Have to. I mean, you know, again, we often look at repair of roads and bridges to bring them up to a standard, you know. We look at roadways that are failing in our community, and we're spending millions of dollars that are correcting it to bring it to the standard that we have, you know, developed in our community, and frankly, that our residents deserve. So, so, to, you know, Councilmember Cuff's point, I mean, I, you know, I have very little interest in approving a project that, you know, would give us out of the gate an F, because that's not the responsible thing to do. It's just not, so.
Do we have any idea on the projected impact fees that would be collected? Because if I'm hearing Bo correctly, it may just be a matter of having the additional turn lane, but I'm with the rest of the council. I think we need to know for sure that this project would generate enough money to alleviate the concerns of the traffic flow.
It definitely would. There would certainly be substantial money there, even to signalize that intersection.
Right. And what's the per thousand square feet shopping center? Does anyone have that? Is it, it's probably $3,000 to $5,000 per thousand? Does that sound right, Ray? So, you're looking at $300,000 to $500,000 generated in impact fees from the shopping center development?
Mayor, Council, if I could add on, just from a process standpoint, these real identified concerns that we're all talking about this morning will have to be addressed. For purposes of this morning, we're simply taking a new, a parcel that's just been recently annexed, kind of like we talked about before. We're assigning it a comprehensive plan. And then, the rezone is not an MPD. If it was an MPD, the one that you're considering right now, then these discussions would be relevant to that. But, this is a straight zone?
No, it's an MPD bill.
I'm sorry. Are you sure?
Yep.
Yep, it is. Well, then, fair enough. Well, let me stand corrected, then. So, but, but still, the point is, is that the, the MPD is going to require further development orders. It's going to require a site plan? It's going to?
No, and I understand that, but my point was, I'm not happy with history here with a particular shopping center that added tremendous capacity in a very confusing way. It just wasn't designed in a way that I think made a lot of sense, and I was just inquiring on how actually that came to be. So, I do not like repeating history, and I think we're in a position where we can make some corrective measures, so.
Do we have input when they come in with their parking plans, you know, as a private developer?
Well, that's why I think Bob was asking, what level can we actually?
Yeah, we have to review all, you know, when you get to this level, when you're at site plan, we review it in accordance with our code, which are minimum standards. And staff does try to encourage, you know, above minimum standards. You know, Island Walk was a challenging project. If you remember, it was about to go dark. We had a new investment group came up that brought it back to life, and of course, you're working with existing trees, existing parking and drainage. It was a very complex project. The parking lot does meet the minimum engineering standards. I've been in several shopping centers, not just in Palm Coast, across, you know, the state of Florida and Orlando especially. When you have those, one way is gets the through, and the other two ways have to stop, it's always confusing. I totally agree with you. It's millennia. It's the same way that, I'm amazed there's not more accidents at those intersections. That being said, I think, you know, once again, taking the, the direction from council here today, that you don't like that approach to how private development gets developed with those sort of intersections in the internal. So, we will encourage applicants to go beyond, if it is a minimum standard, to go beyond and see that. But, yes, we are, if they push back hard enough, they really only have to meet the minimum standards. That's probably statewide engineering standards, is my guess. But, for this project, we're fortunate that it's a greenfield. It's not a redevelopment, so we're working with the raw land, not what's been developed already. And I think staff is more than willing to go the further step and put further restrictions in the development order to ensure that, that intersection that we've identified doesn't ever get to that LOS F. Hope that helps, Mayor, Council. I know we still have a few remaining slides on this item, but hopefully that helps address that issue.
The site was used as a trap and skeet shooting range from about 1992 to 2004, and this generated lead shot from spent shells. And after a Phase One environmental assessment was done, it indicated that a Phase Two environmental audit needed to be done, which they also did. And after that, the applicant had an environmental firm do soil and groundwater testing to determine potential issues from the lead shot. So, this is what has been done over the last three or four months, and why you haven't really seen the MPD rezoning, let's say, last winter. And so, there's been a delay since that September 18th time, primarily due to this analysis. And it was determined that four areas had lead particles above the maximum standards for commercial sites, but found no groundwater contamination above adopted standards. And the applicant will remove the problem soils prior to any approval for preliminary plat or technical site plan.
plat or technical site plan. Staff reviews the, each development order for five key criteria. And A, must not be in conflict with the public interest. B, must be consistent with the land development code and comprehensive plan. And C, must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city. D, must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance. And finally, E, must comply with all applicable government standards. We reviewed this project for the criteria and found that it met these, and the detailed findings are in the staff report. We also found that the MPD rezoning would not create a nuisance hazard or any compatibility issues, as it meets all development standards and is in compliance with the mixed-use designation on the future land use map. The site is also consistent with numerous policies of the future land use and transportation elements of the comprehensive plan, and it will meet all applicable standards of the land development code. Public participation, there was a lot done by the developer in this case. We had a neighborhood information meeting, and there was three of us there, including the projects engineer, the principal for Matanzas High School, and myself. Signs have been put up. We really haven't had any questions on this project as it's went through the process. The planning board reboot, reviewed both applications at its April 17th public hearing. No one spoke at the public hearings, and both were recommended for approval via separate 5-0 votes. The planning staff and the planning board both recommend for city council to amend the future land use map, application 3856, to change the land use designation on the 7.1 acres from Green Belt to mixed use, and to rezone the 29.61 acres from rural estates, public semi-public, and COM 2 to Matanzas Wood Retail Center, MPD for commercial uses, application 3855. And the, David Heekin is the manager for Matanzas Wood Holdings. He's not able to make it here this morning. However, Kurt Wimpay, who's president of Alliance Engineering up in Jacksonville, is the project engineer. He's here if you have any questions.
Can you go back to the original slide with the map?
Okay, I have this one and this one for, to talk about questions.
Can you just, where is the proposed new Advent Health ER and hospital going in comparison to this?
So it will be on the west side of this new loop road coming up, and then Advent Health will build that up to about the area that I showed.
And I forgot, you know, one detail on the LOSF, Bill, or maybe you're the applicant answer. Would the intersection fail without the project ever coming to approval? I seem to remember that this intersection's gonna be a problem regardless of whether this project is approved.
If the project was turned down, it's still, it's still gonna fail. And the traffic impact study is about 18 months old, actually about 20 months old. So the growth factors in that traffic impact study were on the conservative side, and since that time, things have happened up there, including like Palm Coast Park, Sawmill Creek, where we got 259 homes under construction. We also have a Dollar General store going in over at Bel Air and Matanzas Woods Parkway. So a lot of things are happening up there. So that traffic study is going to be updated. I think, my feeling is, it's, the road's at level of service F, I'm sorry, level of service C right now, which is acceptable. It would probably go out in four or five years, even without the project, once we see the new traffic study.
So the proposed, the ER and standalone medical center over here, and then the high school is where?
Right there, you got it.
All right. And then that overpass, I'm just trying to think how this, okay.
To the left.
To the left, okay.
I'm not sure if the previous slide is better or not. Let's see. About the same.
I just wanted to point it out, actually, you know, the impact fees from this project could help us address the issue that's gonna occur regardless of whether this project's approved.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Then the applicant may have some comments.
Yeah, I think the applicant's, once, is gonna come approach the podium.
And before that, Council, do we have any other questions before the applicant?
Council, Mayor?
Good morning.
Kurt Wimpay, Alliance Engineering, I'm here for the applicant David Heekin. I wanna say right off the bat, I didn't have anything to do with Island Walk Shopping Center.[955.11][955.11](Laughter) And I, I'll stand here and say that that will not happen here. So I'm very familiar with this project. We're also doing the work for Advent Health on the other side of the extension for Old King's Way. And I used to live a quarter mile from the intersection of Bird of Paradise and Matanzas Woods Parkway. So I can answer any questions you may have on the project, or the traffic, or the future planning.
So, you know, because of the Palm Coast Park and US 1, I mean, are we looking at this comprehensively, where we're not piecemealing these approvals, but more master planning this whole area of our city? Are we doing that? Are those conversations taking place? And I know that, you know, you're working with Advent, and that's great, because there's probably gonna be some consistency there. But again, you know, this has been an undeveloped area of our community for many years. I mean, it's, I think the traffic patterns, I think, over time, also people will be comfortable, behavior's interesting to change, but are we looking at this holistically to make sure that we're not building this out in silos?
Sure. My belief and the, either staff or the applicant confirm, that with each traffic report, it takes into account previously approved development and then a growth factor along with it. Of course, the city, along with FDOT and the county, are making numerous improvements in this area, preparing for the growth. The development in Palm Coast Park DRI was contemplated as part, while we're finally seeing it come out of the ground, you know, those numbers have been including traffic studies for quite a while now. So you see improvements along Old King's Road. Of course, we're seeking DOT funding, the first phase is gonna go to expand it. This Old King's Road extension, we're currently working with Advent Health to help accelerate that project. And of course, you have the realignment of Palm Harbor Parkway and Old Kings that occurred. And then the roundabout at Matanzas and US 1. So there are a lot of improvements in this area. And yes, Mayor, with each subsequent traffic report that a developer produces, they have to consider the development that was previously approved in their analysis. And so Ray, just confirm that for me, I think that's...
Yeah, exactly right. We do look at the area in a master plan fashion, you know, thus our Old King's Way extension. I mean, we thought about that, you know, 10 years ago, about potential development up in this northern area, and to have that extension and Old King's Road widening. I will tell you that we're very limited in this area, though, for development. This is about it for a potential shopping center in here. The area to the north is for estate residential, and then the area to the north of that is all owned by Flagler County or St. John's River Water Management District as a conservation area. We do have the potential, you know, where Advent is proposed to go, but we are very, very limited for those opportunities in this area, because most of it is conservation area.
So you think that west access primary into the shopping center, will it be just like a one access point, or there'll be, I see future east access. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how the flow of even into the shopping center will be.
You're correct. The west access primary is the primary access, and there's turn lanes in both directions for that.
Okay.
We designed that as a main, if you look at the orange lines in the center of that exhibit that you're looking at right now, that access point will go straight up about 500 to 600 feet before there's any opportunity for turning. I'm sorry?
No, it's, so the future east access, though, that will, are you putting that in as development occurs, or?
Yeah, so that's probably the anchor area, so to speak. And so that's really kind of a right in from the east, east or westbound. So it's more of a right in only and a right out only. So that won't be a primary access point, it's just a quick access from, coming from the east. And then we have a, what's called, well, it's called north access, it's off to the east on Old King's Road, the old, Old Kings. And that's primarily truck access, you know? Some people from the north may use that. And when Old King's Way extension occurs, there'll be another truck access on the very backside of the shopping center. But most of the, most of the traffic will come through the main access, and we're trying to eliminate any possibilities for turns quite a ways in, so there's no backing up of traffic, and we have one spine going through.
Okay.
So it's not gonna be a spider web of access points.
Mayor, Council, again, because this is a master plan development, which I was wrong about earlier, I did go through and read again the master plan development agreement. And on page nine, it specifically says that what you're looking at right here is not the final deal.
Now, Bill, I know that, but you have to understand, I mean, I am, I am trying to point out that if we get in there early enough to have these conversations to avoid this, I need to have that conversation.
Sure.
So I fully understand what we're looking at today and what we're approving, but, you know, I was not on this council when Island Walk was approved. I, you know, I don't know if I would've, you know, had that conversation when we were going through the approval process, but I do know that I do not want to repeat that. So I would like to give our staff enough time to be able to develop strategies to avoid any type of bizarre traffic pattern.
Absolutely. No, I wasn't, I was just trying to detail what you're pointing out, that's all. And to buttress it by saying that they're going to have to, and this is in the development agreement, they're gonna have to submit a subdivision master plan and go through technical site plans in addition. Those are the steps, the specifics. That's all I wanted to say, Mayor, is to support you, the process that's going to deal with the issues that you're bringing up today.
Do you want to add anything else?
No bizarre traffic.
Okay, okay.[1356.53][1356.53](Laughter)
I assure you. As far as the comments about Bird of Paradise and Matanzas, like I say, I lived right there for 10 years. It does need a right turn lane coming out onto Matanzas, that's really the issue, and it will fail at some point regardless, especially in the AMP, AMP hour because of the school traffic. So it's just an issue that's hanging out there, and we noted that in our study.
Okay. Council, any questions or comments?
Oh, I think we beat this to death, though.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna continue to beat it to death.[1391.03][1391.03](Laughter) Honestly, I'm not, I'm, there's not gonna be a repeat.
For today.
Not gonna be a repeat of...
You're absolutely right. Or his punishment will be to move inside that shopping lot near Island Park.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number H7? Please do so at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Holland. My name is Andy Bizon, and I know my wife's sitting there saying, "You just like to hear yourself talk." But we're new residents here, been here about a month and a half, and we feel like we found a piece of paradise over here in Palm Coast. We're from central Florida, Windermere. So Bo, you know about central Florida. We happen to be new homeowners in the conservatory, which is across the street, as you could see from this development. And we love the neighborhood, and we love our neighbors, and there's about 40 homes that are built in there now. There's gonna be about another 300 that's gonna be in there. So when you're taking the impact of traffic, consider that right there on that corner. This is a beautiful piece of property down this greenway, as you well know. Down Old King's is Princess Place and Pellerse Creek and all of that. And I just, you know, coming from central Florida, within a five-mile radius, you're gonna find a Publix. And that's the one thing I'm adamant about in this whole planning, and I appreciate your concern, Mayor Holland. I think they're a little pushy Publix, I think they got a monopoly. What do we got, about six of them here in Palm Coast, and two Indixies, and finally one Aldi's? I would like for you all to consider, and even the developer, how about a Fresh Market or a Whole Foods? Wouldn't that be nice in that shopping center there? Really look forward to something like that around here. Otherwise, you gotta drive up to Ponte Vedra or back to Lake Mary to go to Fresh Market or a Whole Foods. So, and with that, Mr. Howell, as a fellow veteran, I appreciate your service, sir.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I'm somewhat concerned about all the traffic that will be generated in that area from the shopping center, because we're putting a lot of traffic around the high school, and the fumes and the noise. And the World Health Organization and many other health organizations have written documents on the harm to children from the environmental impact of traffic. And I think the city would be wise to take a good look at those studies. But I also have a concern about how this is gonna impact the traffic on Florida Park Drive. We saw when they built the assisted living community place there near Forest Grove, all kind of construction traffic coming through Florida Park Drive to help with that building. Can we be, can the people of Florida Park Drive be guaranteed that the construction traffic for this area here not come through Florida Park Drive? I mean, we already have 8,000 cars per day, over 500 trucks, commercial trucks a day. That's a lot of traffic. That's over 3 million vehicles a year coming through a residential area. And the city really can control this. They can control all cut-through traffic, if they want to, but they got to want to. That's all that I can say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Close public comment, you know, to the speaker's point about getting diverse shopping opportunities, I agree wholeheartedly. I often wonder when we're gonna get a Trader Joe's and those other shopping opportunities. And that will come, that will come when we get more residential growth. A lot of this is market-driven. Publix would not open up a store, I assure you, if they did not know they were gonna make a lot of money doing it. And, you know, I get questions oftentimes about Dollar General, why do we have so many Dollar Generals here? Again, it's market-driven. They do a market study, they know that it's gonna be supported by the community, and then they open up those stores. So we'll continue to encourage that type of market here and hope that it comes at one point. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item, Council? If not, it'll entertain a motion.
Move of approval?
We have two agenda items.
Yeah, that was my only comment. What's...
H7.
H7.
This is a future land use map amendment.
Yeah, yeah. Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number H8.
Move approval with the understanding that the staff has been listening, probably somewhat reluctantly, to our long discussion here today, and that the assurances that the impact fees for whatever is ultimately done under the MPD is going to be reasonably sufficient to address the traffic issues that we've all been hearing about and talking about amongst ourselves.
Hard second on that one.
Hard second.
Hard second.
Motion moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you for the patience of the conversation, I appreciate it. Agenda item number 11-9 is a resolution approving the final plat for American Village. Bo?
Mayor and Council, this is the final plat, the setting of the lot lines for the American Village project. With that, I believe Bill has a few slides just to cover the details, but this is the final plat, so the last step is setting lot lines. Bo?
Good morning. Again, American Village is about 17 acres, and it's located on Pritchard Drive, about a half mile north of White... and it's located on Pritchard Drive, about a half mile north of Whiteview Parkway, and about one mile east of Beltair Parkway. And a preliminary plat was approved, and the infrastructure commenced, uh, last year. A master site plan for the three multifamily tracts was approved by the planning board on March twentieth. The center of the project is zone MFR two, that's about eight acres. And then the, uh, neighborhood lots around that are zoned SFR one inside the project. And then, once you get outside that, on the other side of Pritchard Drive, the lots are typically zoned SFR two or SFR three. In the breakdown of the plat, there's forty-five single-family lots, three multifamily tracts, uh, a stormwater track that's, uh, in the center, and also two small recreational tracts. Planning staff recommends that we adopt, uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash XX, approving the final plat for American Village and authorizing the mayor to execute the plat and staff to issue a final plat development order for application number thirty-eight eighty-three, subject to city acceptance and approval of as-built drawings and required maintenance bond per the, uh, Land Development Code.
Counsel, any questions at this time?
I have none.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number I nine, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I ten is a resolution approving piggybacking the National IPA Omni Partners contract with Williams Scotsman Incorporated for the leasing of two modular buildings for Stormwater and Public Works facilities. Beau.
Mayor, Counsel, at, uh, your last business meeting, you approved, uh, the plan for the immediate improvements related to Public Works and our Stormwater. This is implementing that plan that you approved with the leasing of the two modulators. Uh, Carl will give a few of the details and is available for questions.
Yes, this is, um, associated with those improvements, these are the actual two lease agreements, one for Wellfield Grade, one for Utility Drive. Um, there are two separate lease agreements that we're seeking for approval for a thirty-six month lease. I think the operating, the lease payments are just over four thousand dollars per month each.
Counsel, any questions or comments at this time?
No.
Member of the public wish to make public comment, agenda item number I ten, please do so at this time. I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, resolution ten, I ten.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I eleven is a resolution approving contracts with PBM Construct- Constructors, EAU, Galley Electric, and Zabat Engine Services for the construction of six FEMA contractors, generators, um, projects. Beau.
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, uh, this is part of, uh, your program to make our facilities more resilient, and this is six separate projects of five generators each. That's thirty generators going out across the city at some of our wastewater facilities. Um, it's with multiple contractors, 'cause they're, uh, six separate project bids. Uh, the total cost is two million dollars, of which the state of Florida through, uh, FEMA is gonna cover one point two million dollars of these projects. So this is aligned with city council priorities. Mary's here to give a few of the details and is available for any questions.
Great, thank you.
And we've, uh, applied for an extension, and once we get approved, then we can hit the ground running.
Counsel, any questions or comments at this time?
I have none.
Long time needed.
Bingo.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number I twelve, please do so at this time. And I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I thirteen is a resolution approving a work order with Jacobs Engineering Group for the wastewater treatment plant number one, Headworks Bypass and Diffused Air Improvements Project. Mayor, number twelve?
Did we skip something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Agenda item number twelve is approving a contract with Chinker Electric to provide electrical upgrades for the water treatment plant, one for motor control panels and three motor control centers replacement project.
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, uh, once again, this is a, a utility, uh, renewal project to replace some, uh, old equipment and do some upgrades. Uh, it is budgeted in our Utility Capital Projects Fund, and it looks like Carl and Alex are here to cover a couple of the details and are available for questions.
There's not much to add to that, this is just replacement of old outdated equipment, some of it you can no longer get parts for, it's just upgrades and, and replacement of various component, electrical controls and components.
Counsel, any questions on this agenda item?
I have none.
And I'll open up to the public, any member of the public wish to make comments on agenda item number twelve, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution, uh, twenty nineteen XX.
Second.
For Electric.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number thirteen is a resolution approving a work order with Jacobs Engineering Group for the wastewater treatment plant number one, Headworks Bypass and Diffused Air Improvements Project. Beau.
Mayor and Counsel, this is a work order for design services, uh, related to our wastewater treatment plant number one, uh, with one of our, uh, continuing service, uh, vendors, engineers. Uh, Alex is here for a few of the details and available for any questions, it is budgeted in the Utility Capital Project Fund.
Counsel, any questions? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on this agenda item, please do so at this time. And I'll close public comment, take it back to this council.
Move of approval?
Sir, second, second, moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I fourteen is a resolution approving a contract with Pella Windows and Doors for the replacement of windows at Two Utility Drive.
Mayor and Counsel, this is for replacement of windows at Two Utility Drive and doors, some of which are approximately forty years old, and so it's time, uh, to replace them or start, uh, realizing the effects of those older units. Um, it is budgeted, and, uh, Richard's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Counsel? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number, um, fourteen, please do so at this time. And I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I fifteen, a resolution approving the Fifth Amendment to increase funds for federally funded sub-grant agreement with Florida Department of Emergency Management relating to Hurricane Irma expenses. If anyone votes against this, I would be shocked, but, you know.
Mayor and Counsel, uh, you know, I don't know, uh, who you all called in Tallahassee, but the money has been moving, and so this was added yesterday, it's an additional five hundred thousand for Hurricane Irma, bringing our total to three point nine million, that's been obligated, which is a good step, but the payment's still to come, but, uh, we have been receiving obligations and payments much more rapidly, and so getting close to, uh, you know, being closed out over the coming months with both hurricanes, so.
Any questions?
Available for any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, let me ask you a question, you know, did, without this, uh, are not talking about this specifically, but going back to those FEMA generators, do you have an idea, now that we've approved it, when those generators will be on site?
Who can help answer me that question?
Have, uh, just the ballpark, Carl.
I think the lead times for the manufacturers have been extended due to the growth in economy, but Carl can, can answer that.
About a twelve week lead time, that's after you approve the shop drawings and go through this middle process, so. You're, and you're talking probably eight months before they're on site, make the guess right now.
Well, you know, I was concerned, because we got a tropical depression playing games out there in the Atlantic already. You know, so I would like to have seen the generators here quicker. Is there a way to expedite?
Uh, unfortunately, you know, there are a couple FEMA steps involved in this project before you proceed to the next step, so, um, you know.
Yeah, 'cause currently, right now, this contract's with the state waiting for their concurrent, so we're, until we have that, we can't even proceed with the contractor to move forward to get the shop drawing process started. But once we do, we'll have a timeline put in place, and we definitely gotta put pressure on to process things as quickly as possible. The sooner we get them here, the better.
Yeah, I would try to put this on as fast as track as we're able to here, and if I have to make a call to some of my friends in FEMA in DC, I will.
Appreciate that.
I'd also like to thank the mayor for her extended efforts in making sure that, uh, everyone at the state is, uh, fully on board, and thank you for nudging them along.
I appreciate that. Okay, uh, any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number fifteen, please do so at this time. Okay, we'll take it back, um, part of that motion should be a collective hallelujah.
Make that motion. I would, I'll second it with a sigh. Second.
Okay, moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number J is public participation, a time for the members of the public to make public comment that have not chosen to do so at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, you have up to three minutes, please state your name for the record, your three minutes will begin.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I see roads being resurfaced. What is the schedule for Beltair between one hundred and Palm Coast Parkway? Now, I, I know you probably split it up into sections, but I'd like to know, is there, is there a schedule? Do they, are they, are they gonna do anything, are you gonna do anything on Beltair between one hundred and Palm Coast Parkway? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I live at, uh, twenty-seven Rainstone Lane, and, um, I'm here to address the issue about some littering that goes on there. I'm actually a participant in picking up, I adopted an area, 'cause I think Palm Coast is a beautiful place. And I think it's being defaced by some people that just don't care. And, uh, I was wondering, uh, like, not long ago, there was something that was in The Observer in regards to money being, uh, dispersed to the, uh, R section for, 'cause there's so many children back there as far as, like, revitalizing it, I don't know what was done or anything, but, um, the area back there is, it gets a little, I guess, the, the atmosphere back there for the children, when you have litter and everything back there, and you have people that are not taking care of their trash, it just puts a, a little bit of an atmosphere back there that's probably not supportive to the youth back there. And I'm trying to help the section that I'm in. So, and there's other people that, that beep the horn and stop and speak to me in regards that they're picking up trash too. And I know it's an issue that's not easily addressed, I see your people out there picking up trash in there, and, but I don't know if there's any other, uh, I guess, means of attacking this problem, because it's defacing, you know, Palm Coast, and Palm Coast is a beautiful place. And, uh, another issue I have, uh, over the years, I've been here eight years, and, uh, I moved here from Philadelphia, and this is a really nice place, it really is. And, uh, I can't tell you that enough, 'cause I'm not here complaining, I just wanna be part of the solution here. And, um, there was, uh, people that were next to me, I believe it was, uh, twenty, twenty, twenty-nine Rainstone, and there was, uh, twenty-four Rainstone, there was, uh, violations of people getting into vehicles. And, uh, there's elderly people on both sides of me, and I'm, I'm getting a little old myself, and I'm the youngest one in the neighborhood, it seems like, down there. And there's, uh, a, like, uh, it seems like maybe a lack of patrol, and I did, uh, bring this up, the issue up to, um, the Sheriff's Department down there, and they, they were saying that there's an issue about how many vehicles they have, and the timing, and, and the, you know, the areas they have to address. And, uh, I know that you can't stop all these young kids out here, you know. Back in the day, they had a juvenile division, back in my day, they had a division just for these kids, you know, and I guess, I guess it wasn't budgeted out or something. But, uh, they did catch one of them with cameras, and I did go to the court hearing, and I did get restitution, 'cause they damaged my vehicle. And that was the first brand-new vehicle I ever bought, because I have nine children. So I never had a chance to buy something nice, and here this guy's coming onto my property and defacing my, my, my new vehicle.
Okay, um, thank you for your comments, your three minutes are up. Um, I'll address them after you're, after we're done with the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. We'll close public comment, um, can you, um, do you know when the road is going to be?
Carl, do you have a, Carl's probably the best. I know during last year's resurfacing program, we did do a small section that was, uh, pretty in, uh...
Beltair, as part of our payment management program, that we did the big analysis with our consultant, they put a, a plan, action plan together, Beltair, they, you know, of course, the computer does a simulation based on intersection, tier intersection, so they did identify various pieces along Beltair. And staff has gone back and connected those segments and tried to tie it out to specific years. Um, we're in the, we're in the final stages of putting that plan together with the residential roads, and we'll be going out to bid here shortly, so. Beltair's on the list, coming up, when? I don't have a specific year for you right now, but it is in here in the next few years, if not this coming year.
Hopefully, more to come. Okay.
Do we not have a means to publish this information to, so the public knows that, you know?
We will.
On the website or something, when the plan is done?
Palm Coast Connect will have that ability, yes.
And this program is also connected to our budget with the funding mechanism to fund the entire plan.
Palm Coast Connect, when we're locked in place.
Yep.
Notice I didn't say loaded. Locked in place, uh, everybody will have good information, that's great.
Which is great. And then to the second speaker, I really wanna say thank you for stepping up and, um, volunteering your time to help keep our, our neighborhoods clean. It is a, it's a tough issue, um, our Public Works, um, team members are one, hardworking groups out there, uh, in our community. We do our, uh, main thoroughfares and do weekly pickups, uh, it's hard to do every street in the city of Palm Coast. We live in a very, very large landmass city, the way it was designed. It's, uh, a struggle cost-effectively to, to drive up and down every road. We encourage, if you're not part of a neighborhood watch group, but to assemble a neighborhood watch group. Um, I will tell you, I speak at a lot of the neighborhood watch groups, and, um, as far as having a presence or the crime reduction in those neighborhoods, there is a direct correlation which, with the established neighborhood watch groups, where they're located in the community, and as far as the safety with break-ins and vehicles and everything else. So, um, if, if you're not one, I don't know who is part of one in the R section, but if not, maybe we can look at that. Sergeant, well, Commander Lutz now, um, is, uh, in, in charge of that. Um, we, you can get his contact information of interest on how to set that up. It's a great way for neighbors to come together, to, to really have a second set of eyes of what's going on in the neighborhood. Um, and the Sheriff's Department supports that, uh, they offer a lot of information for the residents to do what they can. And I will say, I speak to groups and organizations like that all the time, and what we hear is, "Keep your car doors locked in your driveway." Um, most times, those that are, um, out there breaking into car do, cars that are in driveways are doing it because they have access to those vehicles, and normally, they see belongings in those vehicles, so they'll see laptops and, uh, oftentimes weapons that are taken, 'cause the car doors are unlocked. So neighborhood watch groups and that information can get to the residents, um, in, in an effort to, to help our community continue to stay beautiful, to continue to thrive. Those that adopt the roadways also in the neighborhood watch groups adopt that whole neighborhood. So you come up with different volunteer schedules to help clean up the littering. But thank you for doing your part, we really appreciate it, and, uh, we, we agree that it's a beautiful community, we need to keep it that way. Thank you. And, and if you can get with the gentleman to maybe give him more information on where to reach out, that'd be great. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda, um, Councilmember Howell.
I wanna wish everybody a, uh... I want to wish everybody a safe and healthy Memorial Weekend, and just for your information, I sent to the Palm Coast Observer some of my thoughts about Memorial Day and what it means to me and some of my veteran friends. So you may want to, John Walsh said he'd publish it for sure online and hopefully in the paper.
Right, thank you. Vice Mayor Clufus.
Two things, the water challenge, the mayor's water challenge, the congratulations, that's excellent, another badge we earned, and also the new basketball backboards at the community center in Holland Park. That is awesome, and I know that is something that Bo definitely was a huge proponent of, and also thanks to Alex for making sure that everything worked out, but that's going to be tremendous, and now we have real basketball hoops to shoot at. So thank you guys very much.
Councilmember Cuff.
Just very briefly and sort of follow up on the gentleman's comments about citizen involvement, particularly in helping to police the litter problem, that's something, you know, my wife and I do in our neighborhood when it starts bothering us enough, and I think it would be a much nicer community if more folks like yourself took that on. And just a general comment and shout out to citizen involvement, I did the Citizens Academy last night and talked to a number of the folks in this class. Palm Coast is the folks who live here and work here and play here, and the more of those people that take ownership, whether it's in their own street or in a park or in one of the thoroughfares where groups adopt a road and help keep things picked up, the better it is for all of us. I think our staff works very hard, but given how much everyone loves tax increases and spending public money, I think it's unrealistic of anybody to think we're ever going to be able to hire enough city people to do everything that needs to be done here in the city, and we all have to take personal responsibility for doing what we can. So again, my thank you to the folks that take time for the Citizens Academy and the gentleman who addressed us today, and the other folks who sit through our nonsense week after week and are regular attendees here at the council meetings. The more involved we all are, the better it works, I think, for everyone. So here endeth the sermon.
And I just had, just one item, and that goes back to the jetting out of the island walk into Walgreens. I've gotten several complaints about residents almost having near misses of vehicles when they're trying to shoot across Palm Coast Parkway in a way not to go around, because you can only go into the public shopping center. The only way really out are Old Kings Road, North, or Florida Park Drive, and then you have this cut through in between, is it IHOP and whatever the bank is?
Chase Bank.
And then it, Chase Bank, and then it shoots through to Walgreens, and there's a lot of vehicles that are taking the, you know, pass-through, and I've heard a lot of residents that have messaged me and that said, can we please do something about that? So, yeah.
They floor it to come out, and then there's severe, like, up, yeah, so they.
I agree. And I think it's just because there's only one way in in that area that they try to get out and then get back on Palm Coast Parkway, but if we could look at that and bring that back, that'd be great. Okay, agenda item number Al is discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
No report, mayor.
Okay. M, discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Mayor, council, obviously I'm here for Mr. Borton, who's traveling to the Kaufman Foundation on entrepreneurship, so a great event, so covering for him, but wanted to just cover a couple things. Once again, congratulations to community and staff getting the word out about the water challenge, and of course, the mayor's leadership in helping us get the word out. Hurricane season is right around the corner, and I am, someone told me that the more you prepare, the less chance there is a hurricane that comes, so encourage all of our residents to get prepared for the upcoming hurricane season and take the proper steps.
Those disaster guides again?
I believe, I don't think I have the right person here.
Okay, yeah, because I know, I would ask that each of our city council members, it's a great exercise, we stand out at Publix with our first responders, and we give out disaster recovery guides to the residents at Publix. I think we gave out thousands last year, and it's a great way for them to know where their evacuation zones are, how to prepare for the hurricane in advance of it, what types of kits they can put together, just the code red, the, all the things that go into this preparedness, and then the guides also be relocated at our fire stations for pickup, our parks, our city hall, so we just want to make sure we're very proactive in advance of the storm, so we're doing our part.
Absolutely.
So you'll let us know when you're doing that, and then Kendra can schedule with each of us the hours, we can work it.
And because you love island walks so much, you can stand in front of a Publix there.
Yes, I do. I know.
I mean, to look at a glass is half-full approach to the island walk parking, the folks that do make it to Publix to pick up the free disaster guides are being subliminally trained in how to follow evacuation routes and traffic directions. In the event, as we hope it won't be, that becomes necessary during a storm.
I've never been reminded as much that I don't look strong enough to be in the fire department when I'm wearing a fire department shirt, and I have to explain to them that...
Yeah, no. Yeah, I've had a few comments to that effect too, but it's still a great thing to do and applaud the firefighters for getting out there.
Just three other things, obviously, if you're around city hall, you'll start seeing some younger faces. Our interns are slowly arriving this summer and working on some very important projects. And then a couple events, tonight, of course, is Food Truck Tuesday, benefits the Family Life Center, a pretty great organization in our community. And then, of course, Monday is the Memorial Day Ceremony at eight AM, so encourage you all to join us, celebrate veterans. And with that, that's all I have, mayor.
And we will have a new flag there.
Yes, the flag will be in working, great.